All right, it is just about six o'clock. I think we can go ahead and get started. Deputy Clerk Schultzeis, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., in person at City Council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, and simulcast on Zoom. Acting Mayor Matthew Dolick presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There is a five-minute time limit for speakers.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting being held today, Monday, March 27, 2023, at about 6:03 p.m. in the City Council chambers of Prospect Heights City Hall, located at 8 North Elmhurst Road in Prospect Heights. And Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please, to establish a forum? I believe you're muted.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry. Good evening, Council. Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Ludvistson?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
And Alderman Dash will be out this evening with prior notice, so we do have four of us here, so we do have a forum. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of the British Commons, the white nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The first order of business is the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the March 13, 2023, City Council regular meeting minutes?
So moved, Morgan Adams. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvistson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Item 4, Presentations. We do have the Chicago Executive Airport Monthly Update presented by Director Jim Kiefer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. Great to be here. Everything is going extremely well at the airport. Busy year is coming up. We have a budget approval in front of you on April 10, I believe. Wheeling is April 17. So we're looking forward to an approval. Any questions on that budget? Should probably wait until then, when our finance director is here. We're going through a noise exposure map. It happens every five years. We have public input, and usually we'll hold it either in the city or in the Village of Wheeling. This year, it happens to be in the Village of Wheeling, and that is June 13, and we don't have a location yet. With that, we have the RCEP program. Out of the 613 applicants, 267 are from the City of Prospect Heights, of which 221 is in the Willow Heights condo. That's approximately 44 percent. On that same note, the FAA just paid up for the initial setup in the first nine homes that we were bankrolling, but they, with the 90-10 split, we had to put the money up front, and then they reimbursed us at their leisure. So the startup is hopefully probably June of this year, and they've already committed 2.5 million for the first larger group. Back to master drainage study. The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District requires us to do every so often a master drainage study. We just signed a contract with Primera Engineering, and that should get going, along with the ALP Airport Layout Plan. We're still waiting for input from the federal government, and it's not always written in stone. So we suggest an airport layout design. It's under flux all the time, depending on what happens on the airfield. Once again, that's our capital improvement funds. Executive Director Jeff Miller went to Washington, D.C. to meet our legislators. We have a confirmed visit scheduled for April 27 with Senator Tammy Duckworth. Senator Durbin is to be determined, and we reached out to Congressman Schneider, and we're working with the staff for a date. He's a frequent visitor, but we always love to have him. Hawthorne Hangar 22 is open for groundbreaking in April, and we'll get the invitation out. We'd love to see you up there. We're excited about that. The airfield lighting project, it's been delayed for about a year based on parts and logistics, but now they're scheduled for April 17. The other good thing is we've scheduled Rock Runway for June 24. It's a week earlier than usual. Last year, we sold out, so if you want to run or walk, I suggest you do it sooner than later. We've got a new shirt, looks a little fancier for handouts, and we're looking forward to it. What else? That should be about it, and we're looking forward for a good year. So any questions open for anyone?
Any questions for Director Kiefer?
It's too easy. Come on. Throw them in. And good luck, everyone, on the elections, what, next week?
Next Tuesday.
On Tuesday before.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 4B is the budget presentation, and as we did two weeks ago, I'm going to ask that that be pushed back to towards the end of the meeting. We'll go through our regular business and get that out of the way, and then we can get into these discussions. So I'm going to skip that just for the moment. There are no appointments or confirmations this evening, which brings us to public comment on agenda matters. Has anyone registered, or does anyone wish to speak? There being none. There is no consent agenda, but in old business, just for a clarification here, we were going to have a second reading on the liquor license for Barcelado, but that has been postponed until the April 10 meeting, and it was requested by the Barcelado owner because he was not able to make tonight's meeting, so that has been postponed until the April 10 meeting. Item 9, New Business. It's a staff memo and ordinance establishing water rates for fiscal year 2023-24. This is a first reading, so there is no action, but we can open it up for discussion. Acting Administrator Mr. Falcone, if you want to give any background or say anything before we open it up for discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor stated, ordinance 2307 is our annual ordinance establishing water rates for the next fiscal year. I just want to point out that this, that there is actually going to be an increase in the water rates for fiscal year 2324 of 3.8 percent, and this is, the water rate is actually comprised of four segments, so I want to make sure everyone understands what's being increased and what's staying stagnant. There's a delivery charge, there's an infrastructure charge, a debt service charge, and then a water sales rate per thousand. The water sales rate per thousand, the debt service charge, and the infrastructure charge are all staying identical to fiscal year 2223 last year. The 3.8 percent increase is solely the delivery charge, and that is actually a pass-through from an Illinois American increase. As some people may know who are on city water, Lake Michigan water, we actually, the City of Prospect Heights buys our water through Illinois American. So any increases that Illinois American charges their customers, the City of Prospect Heights being one, is passed through to our residents. So there is an increase of 3.8 percent, but that is solely on the delivery portion of the water rate. If I misspoke or said anything or missed anything, we have our finance team here of Nate and Bob to answer any more in-depth questions.
All right, I'll open it up for a discussion. Does anyone have any questions at this time, or finance departments? All right. Again, this was a first reading only. We'll move on. Item 10, Staffing Elected Officials and Commission Reports. We do have the February financial report presented by Nate Giacconi of the Finance Department. Nate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Copy of the financial report for the month of February was included in your agenda. At this point in the year, revenues are at a good place in 95 percent of the budget, and expenses are at 91 percent of the budget. We're anticipating our tax receipts to begin, our second installment of tax receipts to begin on April 1, so we should be able to, or hopefully Cook County's on time, right? But if you have any other questions, I can take them at this time. It's a pretty standard report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If there are no questions, thank you very much for your report, and at this time, I'd like to return to item 4B, which is the City of Prospect Heights Budget Presentation, which includes capital improvement plan, tourism, motor fuel tax, water, sewers, special service areas, solid waste, road construction, debt service, and police pension funds. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Acting Administrator Peter Falcone, if you want to...
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is the second part, as the mayor stated, of our second and final of our budget presentation. I'm going to turn it over to finance here in a bit, and then we'll also be leaning on our public works and our engineering department. We're going to start out with our, all of our other funds. We're going to hit a small recap or a forecast of three-year projections for revenues and expenditures, and then we're going to hit our capital improvement plan, and we'll rely heavily on our engineering department and public works for that. So right now, if the finance department could take it away with all of our other funds?
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff and residents. I'd like to go over tonight is the other funds, the second part of our budget. We're going to start with the motor tax, motor fuel tax fund. We're looking at revenue there in that fund that we make assistance as in prior years. Just a note, this year, we did experience a better-than-expected interest revenue rate or return on our money was higher this year, and we also received the last payment of the rebuild Illinois grant money, too. As for the expenses in this fund, we have $493,000 budgeted for drainage improvement projects for the use of the MFT funds in '24, and unspent funds will remain restricted for MFT allowable costs pending future projects. In our TIF fund, the Palatine Road TIF fund, it's expiring in, it expired in '23, and terminated, actually, it was terminated in September of '22. There's no budgeted revenue anticipated for '24, minimal costs to be paid in '24, remaining increment is planned for redistribution in '24. We go on to our tourism fund. The hotel tax projected to be $671,000 as the economy rebounds from the COVID-19 pandemic. We're starting to see an uptake in people booking hotel rooms, and it's been nice to see that over the last year and a half. Police services will also be used out of this fund. The city has reimbursed 42.5 percent of net revenue per the agreement. Given the increase in revenue for '24, reimbursement to the city will increase from $102,000 from FY '23 to $234,000 for this, for FY '24. The solid waste fund, the revenue includes anticipated dollar rate increase to a single multifamily revenues, I'm sorry, multifamily homes for FY '24. Expenses for this fund, the service charger general fund remains at $100,000 for FY '24, with swing charges projected to increase by 5 percent. The fund balance for this fund, the budget includes a recommended transfer to the capital improvement fund of $40,000 for FY '24 and $75,000 for this current fiscal year. In the special service area funds, revenue, there's really no significant revenue streams in funds 1 through 40, SSA 1 through SSA 4. The revenues for SSA 5 and SSA 8 are tax levies totaling $193,000 for FY '24. For expenditures, there's really no significant expenditures planned. Property tax receipts are accumulated and reserved for future capital requirements, and those are usually for annual repairs and maintenance costs. In regards to our parking fund, the revenue in the parking fund is still not where it was before pre-demic. We do have, see some increases over the last year. This is due still probably to people not commuting as much on the train as they used to. Expenditures are clearly funded by the city's general fund at $112,000 and also budgeted for the same in FY '24. The next fund is the DEA fund. This fund here, we don't project any type of revenue as the federal guidelines regarding this fund. The revenues that come in are from payments from the federal government on cases that the police officer works, but again, those revenues are just, are used for any expenditure for police-only type of expenses. And in those, with those, regarding expenses, they're used to buy the police vehicles and also for outfitting police vehicles. So over the last couple of years, those, any money that came in for the DEA fund has been used for buying squad cars. The other fund, the road construction debt fund, revenues are based on a tax levy and they're budgeted at 1.27 million. Any expenditure related with this road construction debt fund is mainly related to debt service payments requirements. We get into our water fund with the rate increase of $2.14 per water customer, which is a 3 percent increase, 3.8 percent increase, excuse me. This is to offset any increasing operating expenses. Expenditures in this fund, costs are consistent with last year with projected increase of $35,000 to replace defective water meters. Regarding the sewer fund, revenue here is projected to be flat about $800,000, and there's no planned increase in sewer rates at this time. Expenditures related to this fund are budgeted at $407,000 for system improvements included in proposed CIP plan, which will be discussed later. Other costs slightly increased for inflation. As we get close to wrap up the budget, there's some considerations to think, recommendations to think about. First one would be inter-fund transfers. Included in the budget is $112,000 transfer from the general fund to the parking fund to support operating expenses, a $40,000 transfer from solid waste, and a $1 million transfer from the general fund, the capital improvements fund, for future capital projects. As we discussed in the first meeting of our budget, the police pension fund contribution of 1.29 million is a contribution from the tax levy and a general fund support. This amount represents 89 percent of the actuarially recommended contribution and over 170 percent of the state minimum requirement. The capital fund planning, which we'll discuss in further detail later on in this presentation, approval of the projects planned for FY '24, total 7.5 million, to be funded by $5.75 million in grants and 1.8 million in city support. And we just spoke about the water rate. We have an increase of 3.8 percent, which will be from $55.80 in FY '23 to $57.94 in FY '24. This is again to offset the increasing costs based on increasing variable expenses, including maintenance, insurance, and personnel costs. So with that, it's the second part of the budget for the, second part of our other funds, part of the budget. If you have any questions, we can, I can help you try to understand some of this stuff.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, a quick question about the capital improvement fund and the 1.8 million. Is that, if you can go back to your slide on that, is that up to... Well, you showed...
It's a slide. Go back.
Inter-fund transfer?
No, it's the, it's the one, it's...
It's the slide right before that.
Yeah, it's the last slide was just on.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so the capital, the capital plan fund says there's 1.8 million from city support. That means, that's not just general fund. You're showing a million dollars from the general fund, but the other $800,000, is that old money moved from general to capital improvement, or is that money from the '24 budget year being moved into capital improvement? Because really, all the balance in the capital improvement fund is money that came from transfers from the general fund.
Right. I believe it's also include the 1 point, the request for a 1.2 million that'll be coming up for the next meeting in April of the inter-fund transfer for the general fund.
So that's all new general fund money moving to the capital improvement fund, the 1.8 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, excuse me, Pat.
What?
Quickly, just want to add something. This is Sheri.
Oh.
The general fund contribution is a couple of things. It's the inter-fund transfer, but it's also the city's share of local projects. So the 20 percent local share that we have to contribute, that is not part of the inter-fund transfer. That's why it's a million eight, not a million.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I did have one quick question regarding the DEA fund. It seems like in the past, there's been a long delay in getting that money to the city. I don't know how long of a delay, but like a year or two, it seems to run significantly behind. Is that still the case, or what is the lag time between when we actually get the money that's owed to us?
That's still the case, and I think that because of the pandemic, it was even longer to take and get there, and it's based on court cases, when a court case gets cleared through the federal courts, and they have to then prorate the dollar amount that goes back to the municipalities that supply an officer to the DEA task force. So it's basically going to be, I think it's because of the court action and waiting on that proceeds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we move on? All right, Peter?
I believe finance still has the ball with the forecasting. Yes. Hi, good evening, City Mayor, council members. We were tasked to put together a budget forecast for the 2025 to 2027 year. I believe this is the first time that a budget forecast of this kind was put together with Prospect Heights, and we're just going to go through the budgeting of some of the major funds. Our projected timeframe for this forecast is three years, and in going through this a little bit of background and a little bit of insight into what it is that we took into consideration, so some of the key assumptions are for revenues. The revenue forecast is based on historical growth rates and considerations for current and future economic trends. When we took a look at expenses, we use various percentages between 2 and 2.5 percent, and where we got those from was from the five-year inflation rate expectations that are running through. So some of the expenses have a 2, from 2 percent all the way to 5 percent based on the upcoming inflation rates or the projected rates. Salaries were tracked to current contractual agreements and treated similarly going forward through the years. Some expenses, like health insurance, that were identified to be a little bit more sensitive to inflation rates, were projected, were had projected increases that were higher than your standard 2.5 percent for commodities. And again, some of the major funds that we forecasted are the general fund, the MFT, tourism, DEA, solid waste, the capital fund, water, parking, and sewer. So what we're going to see is a snapshot, and this is actually a roll-up of all the detail into a, into a chart. So the first chart that we're going to look at is the general fund. So some of my highlights, I'm not going to go through this line by line, but some forecasted highlights for the general funds is that transfers to the capital fund are forecasted with slight increases over time, and general fund expense increases for items such as commodities. The cost assumes the 2.5 to 5 percent increase, and then again, it's taken into consideration the inflation over the next five years. MFT fund. The MFT fund includes expenses for the capital plant. However, additional projects may be identified for use for all of these funds. The tourism fund, the revenue is budgeted on continued increase in occupancy rates, which in turn increases the city's reimbursement for police services. And just as Bob had mentioned, the fiscal year '24 budget went up from 102 to over $200,000. So as we see the economy picking up, we see those, those shares for the police increase. Now DEA fund, revenues are restricted to support public safety expenses, and therefore cannot be used to fund the city operations. And again, in accordance with the DEA requirements, revenues are not budgeted. So what you see there is some interest costs for expenses, for revenues. Solid waste. As mentioned before by Bob, our forecast includes the dollar anticipated rate for single-family and multifamily homes in fiscal year '24, but we didn't, we didn't build in any increases for future years because we thought those increases were adequate. For expenses, they reflect a 5 percent increase in swing charges, and that's to provide the city surcharge for the planned roof repairs at the swing. Capital projects. The capital fund expenses are in line with the proposed CIP plan that we're going to go through. This includes costs associated with possible, with a possible referendum into fiscal year '25, '26 for a new road program. The details for the proposed CIP plan are coming up in this presentation. Water fund. The water fund revenues assumes a $6 debt service component that will be transitioned to capital reserves for the water system. Expenses included for regular routine and non-capital repair or replacement costs have been identified at this time for this forecast. The fund balance accumulation provides for future capital improvement or replacement. Moving on to the parking fund, transfers from the general fund continue to increase in accordance with the expenditures in this fund, and revenue is anticipated to be flat over the next two years, over the next few years, excuse me. For the sewer fund, sewer fund revenue assumes no increase. A recommended rate study should be considered within the next two years to identify some of these revenues going forward. Operating expenditures are increasing due to inflation. No capital projects are identified past the current project for repairs from the camera So this slide represents a summary. As I've noted before, only major funds were budgeted for during this forecast. The TIF, the SSA, debt service, and pension funds are not included. That's because these funds are basically restricted in nature. Revenue from the tax levy is restricted, and expenses are determined by debt requirements and current pension... and current pension obligations. The TIF fund has been terminated, and the closeout will be in fiscal year '24, as Bob mentioned earlier. For the funds we forecasted, we can see a decrease in cash balances as we progress through 2027. This decrease is due to forecasting the CIP road program. However, the funding source for this program has yet to be determined. Does anybody have any questions that I could address at this moment?
Any questions for Nick? Go ahead.
Yes, if you just go through that cash breakdown, because every time I think I fully understand it, and I don't. But can you go through like just to give us some like big-ticket items of like the restricted money? Is that the balance left for... Or is... what's the purpose of the restriction?
Okay, so the restricted funds are restricted for use only. Those... right, so those are for items such as the... For the capital projects. Sheri, do you have any insight on this question?
Yes, can you go back to this slide so I could see the numbers?
Pat's looking at this slide right here.
Okay, so the cash breakdown restricted money is the cash accounts that the city has that are for restrictions, like MFT... I'm sorry, not MFT. We have restriction... The restricted funds we have, the SSAs are restricted, the DEA counts restricted, the water fund, the sewer fund, those... That's restricted cash. So those monies in those funds can only be used for what those special revenue funds are for, as I stated. The capital fund and the MFT fund cash netted together, at the end of the year, you'll see when we take those, the capital cash balance, as you saw on the slide, goes negative, which is pretty much what wipes off the offset of the MFT cash. MFT is not specifically identified for capital projects, so that is a funding source that's yet available once we could get some projects approved by IDOT and assigned to that project. So they're almost a wash. That would be like if we used all the MFT money to fund all the capital projects going forward, we're at a net minus $400,000. Non-spendable is straight off our balance sheet. We've got some liabilities and assets that are considered non-spendable. I don't recall off the top of my head the detail of that number. Capital committed is a $5 million amount for future projects to cover what you can see as the negative balance right there for fiscal '27, the negative 4.4. I just want to reiterate that those expenses in this forecast do include, I think it's about $6 million, it'll show on the detail of the CIP plan, for a road program. There is no revenue associated with that cost at this moment. That, of course, is left to council consideration at the time, but that is the drop-off year of when the debt service will be paid. The emergency reserve cash is in accordance with our fund balance policy. The 3.3 million or 3.2, that increase from the 3 million, just because our cumulative expenses are increasing. And then that leaves us with unrestricted cash of about 9, 9.5, 9.6 right there. So this breakdown is strictly the cash balances we have in a cash summary if we were to look through there, but those monies are earmarked. The capital account doesn't have its own cash balance, so that's why we're always showing that as a committed part of cash as opposed to being restricted. If our capital fund had a cash balance, it would be included in that restricted number. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, yeah, it does, but I made a couple more questions.
If I may also interject quickly. While MFT doesn't have the same restrictions as, say, one of our enterprise funds, there are MFT restrictions in that the projects that we're using those MFT funds for has to be a qualifying project.
It's quasi-restricted.
Exactly, so we couldn't just use it to build a building. So there are some restrictions there, but Sheri is right, it's a little bit more flexible, or it's a lot more flexible than our enterprise funds, say, our sanitary sewer fund or water fund. And then, as Sheri mentioned, the outlying years, I believe it starts in '25, is it fiscal year '25? Our projected 3 million, is it 3.9 million or whatever that figure is that we're anticipating in necessary expenditures for road projects? As we know, last time we went out for a referendum for that, so that may be something that's going to have to... It's going to be on the plate of the elected officials to determine if they want to continue with another referendum.
Pat?
Just a couple more, go ahead, quick ones. So Sheri, you were saying that the capital and MFT netting of that negative $467,000 goes all the way out to '27? So it's including all projects in the capital improvement fund that will be done through the '26, '27 fiscal year?
Yes, that's in that column right under that forecast column of fiscal '27. So that is what the projected cash breakdown will be at the end of the forecasted year of '27.
Oh, okay, that's why, all right, I understand. And that includes $6 million of road, just generic road improvements in that one year in '25?
I think if we can go back to the detail, I believe it was a $3 million mark, maybe you could jump in. I think it's $3 million in '26 and $3 million in '27. I can't remember the detailed CIP plan.
That's correct. That's the approximate timeframe for that. Of course, we have to come up with the funds before that, and then part of that is also 20... The beginning of '24, '25, we're going to do another road assessment. We had pushed that off from last year, deciding to wait till we had some funds lined up before we assess the roadways for what we're going to exactly do. So we're ballparking the amount of roadway resurfacing needed in that number. Thanks, Sheri.
We also go into greater detail on the capital improvement plan that's following next, so you'll kind of see where those shortfalls are, Pat. I'm sorry, Alderman.
No, just... I just want to make sure I understand this. So this goes out to '27, and we're saying we're a little under $500,000 upside down in the capital and MFT balance. But in that includes $6 million of general road improvements in '24 and '25, or '25 and '26? So we already have like 40% of what we spent in '11 on roads built into this budget, four roads with the $6 million... Or with the... You said $6 million. So really, we're not looking at the full amount when the bonds expire to redo the roads, because we'll have $6 million set aside for that. Is that what you're saying?
The first $3 million is in the '26, '27 year. We're going to get to that a couple slides from now. There's a good breakdown of it.
The $6 million you're talking about is the MFT balance, correct? Sheri, if I'm not misspeaking?
Yes.
Okay.
That's assuming that we don't use that for any other projects, and we just sit on it until it's time for the road project to begin?
Correct, and then, and like I said, that is restricted to certain projects. But what we are anticipating is after the road bond expires, and this would be '27, fiscal year '27, we're anticipating... That's when we start with the roughly $3 million. It's actually $3.3 million a year in road projects moving forward.
So it's only $3 million in the last budget projection for roads. I'm just trying to get an idea of when I look at this $500,000, you know, number, how much that... What is included for the future road project? I know we're getting into that, and that's going to be the next thing we talk about, but before we move on, I'd just like to know that that balance is what... There's an assumption made that we're going to do all the capital projects we have already listed and shown, but also included in that is X amount of dollars for a $3 million a year road project going forward. So that includes one year of the $3 million? Or is it... Is it two years? I thought somebody had said it was two years, or $6 million.
Yes, the current slide that's posted up there kind of shows the expense that's going to come up in the next couple fiscal years, so we don't mix up the drainage improvement projects that are multimillion dollar with where the road project falls into later on in our forecast.
Okay. But then the last thing, I promise this is the last question. But the balance in that capital fund makes the assumptions of the general fund transfers that are shown on the general fund forecast, right?
That is correct.
So we're assuming about $1.1 to $1.3 million a year being able to be moved from general fund to capital in order to get to only being 500 short in '27, which then in that year, we have 3.3... Almost $4 million set aside for road projects. Does that make sense? I feel good if that's true. I didn't know... I guess I didn't realize we were building in that the road projects down at the end of this projection, that we were putting in almost $4 million or $3.4 million to that, that gets us to this current $500,000 shortage. That's good, okay.
That makes sense, Pat. We just have to keep in mind, going forward, any additional grant revenue is going to be included as well, which if we didn't have the grant awarded, we didn't place those types of grants in the forecast for revenues. But expenses, yes, we did put the road program in there just to bring it to the table, bring it to light that that is what our plan is. But the funding source could be... We don't know what it is at this point. That'll be council consideration at that time when we get there. So we weren't reaching for straws on the revenue side. I guess that's a conservative point of view.
No, that's correct, and the grants are the wild card. I mean, all of our capital projects, even our small ones, are pretty much reliant on grants to move them forward or get them completed. So we've been very, very fortunate, and it's hard work by staff, that we've gotten a lot of grants, as you can tell by the spreadsheet shown, and we plan on continuing that. Because, again, the projects, we... Like any other municipality, we have more needs than we have money. And as we go through the CIP, you'll see there's certain things we're trying to move forward on, some of the smaller ticket items that we're trying to squeeze in the budget when we have the money to do it, just because projects like Arlington Countryside are fantastic. The project on the east side, Willow Trails, that's going to be fantastic. But without those large grant awards, those are just literally a wish, so...
The only thing I notice about this, though, is that we're making an assumption going forward with the '24 budget year, that we're going to bring in about $5 million in interfund transfers from general fund to capital improvement. So I'm also assuming that if we... If things start to get more expensive, or gas goes up, or inflation increases and things cost more, the thing that will be shorted will be these interfund transfers, right? Because we wait till the end of the year to do those. So just so everybody knows, there's an assumption that $5 million over this projection is going into capital that gets us to the $500,000 short, but also includes $3.4 million in road money, but there's a lot of... I know grants are important, but these interfund... This interfund transfer is probably the biggest thing that we have, but it's the first thing to get cut if we start to run short in a year, just so that I'm understanding... So I understand it correctly. That money's not just sitting there. We're assuming this $5 million coming in over four years into the capital improvement program from general fund.
That is correct.
Okay.
And just to be clear, we're not... You're making no assumptions of any grant money in these projections at all?
The only grant revenue that we put into the capital fund was when, if we've already been awarded the money. That is correct. We did not assume that grants would be awarded.
And with respect to the revenue, you... Your assumptions for revenues from local distributed funds or LDF, did you... Was that pretty flat from what it is now? Or did you make any assumptions of increase at all?
There's slight increases to almost all the revenues. The LGDF, based on income tax, is just really a function of earnings across the board and taxes that individuals and corporations pay. So as those funds go up, as so will our distributions. Nothing significant, very reasonable, small increases based on how we've gone from year to year post-COVID.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? And Pat, along with... Yes, yes, go ahead, Rich?
It's Rich Tibbetts. I have a question for regarding the road fund, putting away money towards that. And I was just trying to refresh my memory about the previous program. When we sold bonds previously, wasn't that whole program about $5 million? Does anybody remember? Pat, you remember?
You're talking about the total amount spent on roads?
Yeah.
No, it was much more than that.
How much was it?
Was it like somewhere between 10 and 15 million? We issued bonds over two or three years, and some of the issuance...
I remember going out for bid, and the bids coming back lower than we expected, and I thought it was in that ballpark. That's why I was just trying to put together the amounts that we're putting aside with what we're going to need to do if we ever did a whole road program all at once. I don't know if we're planning on doing that again, but, you know, I assume we're going to do it more incrementally.
Well, I mean, let me ask a question to follow up with his. So you're not saying that we're not going to need another referendum for the road project? I mean, it sounds like we will. Am I correct? Oh, I'm talking... I'm sorry, I'm talking to Sheri.
Sure, no, absolutely.
Yes, it does.
We're...
Yes.
Yes, I... That's the easiest staff answer we could give, is yes. We... The amount of money that would need to go into our roads, we're anticipating, I don't see it less than 15 million. I don't know, I can ask for expertise with Mark? Is that a roundabout number, Mark?
Yes, so for a dollar amount of 15 million, we don't have that capital. We don't have that MFT, so we would require another funding source. The chances of us getting a $10 million grant are very slim or anywhere near that. So the next revenue source would be to bookmark... Or bookend the falling off of one referendum for a new referendum to start up immediately after.
If I could add, when we did the road program back in 2011, 2012, most all the city streets were in dire need. So there was a big outlay that was required at that time because of the massive deterioration. As we move forward, we're going to try to get into a staggered approach. If we do this, we're not going to replace every street in town at the same time. All that does is you need to have the latter affecting to do... You know, you need to do things in stages and steps. So when we do our pavement analysis in the beginning of '24, '25, we'll be able to really get an idea of where we're at. We have a current analysis. It shows roads that were going to be done in '21, '22, '23 that we haven't touched yet. So when we look at our current proposal, it shows roads that need to be done, so... But again, some roads are deteriorating at a faster rate. It depends on how they were done, and if the substructure below it was in good shape or not, or we just milled and went over the top. So those are a lot of things that come into the factoring of the road program. So we're not putting out that we're going to do all the roads at one shot this time.
But that doesn't mean we're not going to need another referendum for another bond for the roads.
Correct.
Again, to be clear.
Yes.
And I know this... I'm sorry. I know that we're not talking about this right now on the policy direction for how we go about asking for that money for the roads, or how we go about deciding what we're going to spend on roads without having a referendum if it doesn't pass or whatever happens. All that kind of has to be done simultaneously, because there's no way we can go and do two years of a five-year project and say, "Sorry, there's not enough money," and then you go out for a bond referendum. there's not enough money. And then you go out for a bond referendum and somebody says, I got a brand new street, within my word. I mean, this is very complicated, very, there's countless variables in this that have to be considered when we even start talking about doing the first part of the '27 road portion. Because if we don't have enough to do the whole thing, at that point, we have to reassess how we go forward with replacing or just patching streets again, you know? Because we can't, we can't move forward with any part of replacement without knowing that we fully fund all the streets that have to be redone, which is basically 90, 95% of what's there now.
Yeah.
So just want to put that out there.
Good point. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Peter?
I believe we've moved on to, Nate, are you?
No, just, just the, we, so during this discussion and the question and answers, we, we've touched on this slide. Again, this slide shows us that we're heavily relying on grant funds, as Peter said. And then this slide right here identifies that in closer to fiscal year '25, '26, we will need that possible referendum. So in decrypting these slides, we've already discussed them, but I wanted, we wanted to put them in the slide so you'd have it for your record. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark and Dan Strahan to discuss the projects in more detail.
Dan, are you out there?
Yes, I am.
All right. Dan, you want to take us through this first one? It's pretty much just what we just covered. Just talks about where the money is distributed and the plan. Again, I'll keep going back to that '24, '25 is when we're talking about really getting a handle on what needs to be done on the roads. That'll give us a better plan to jump off with funding, but a real visual and a strategic plan for what needs to be touched. Dan, put these numbers together. It's just kind of preliminary as to where we're at on that.
Correct. As you mentioned, Mark, a lot of this has been touched on a little bit already, but the idea here is in fiscal year '24, '25, there would be some initial light work that's done to kind of scope out a, a project and what roads would be involved, et cetera, with the idea that a, I think the underlying assumption at this point is that a referendum would, would be the funding means for a, a road program. The, the total amount that we talked about in terms of 20, 2022 or 2023 dollars was about 12.2 million, which would resurface about 60% of the city roadways. The idea would be that that would be spread out over four years. So that's where that $3 million a year comes from. So that first year would be in fiscal year '26, '27. And so there's design engineering anticipated for the, the previous year. So in '25, '26, the first project, design work will be done and bid out in the summer of '26 as an initial project. I think that covers, and then moving forward, there would be a $3 million project each in the next three years. So the, the first two projects are shown there in '26, '27 and '27, '28. And then the final line there is general street maintenance. And that amount just covers emergency patching and, and things like that to keep the road in safe condition.
Every year, we have a certain amount of potholes that we just can't fix, and we have to do patching in different neighborhoods due to deterioration or de-elimination of the, the layers of asphalt that's on there. So more to come next year. We'll be a little closer to the target that's set up for this. As we move on, Dan, we have drainage improvements. I'll kind of start this one off. Obviously, we've been talking about these all year and last year and the year before and the year before. Dan's got a nice layout here of kind of the, the funds and where they're coming from, the funding sources. And as Peter has mentioned, if you look at those funding sources, MFT, RBI, the Department of Transportation, MWRD, there's, there's some big numbers on these projects that we have going. Dan, if you want to just highlight the, like the Willow Road project first?
Sure. Thanks, Mark. I think the council has heard a lot about the Willow Road project over the years. It's been around for quite some time. I think the project itself is, it's been pretty well defined, what the goal is. It's to, to raise Willow Road up above the flood elevation as well as Owens, Owen Court. And so the idea would be to raise both those up to prevent the frequent flooding that we've seen, even this past spring with seasonal rainfall events. We saw water and ice on the one road, our own court, within the past month. So that scope has been well defined for a while. What's, what's held up the project from getting into final design has been the, the topic of compensatory storage, which took some time to define. Over this past summer, we were able to identify open space parcels on park district property and on church property at our Redeemer Church adjacent to McDonald Creek that MWRD agreed would be sufficient for this project. And so we were able to get going with initial design. This, this next slide indicates we have 60% design submitted that was made on March 17. So that's about where our progress is. We're working with MWRD and Cook County Department of Transportation highways. We're meeting on a regular basis to keep them apprised of the design as Willow Road is a, is a county road, of course. And both agencies are contributing significant funding to the project.
We're real excited that that's going to start this year.
Right. Yes, that's, so that's the anticipation. We're looking to get this out to bid over the summer with the intention of getting the first phase of it done this fall. One of the design elements that we discovered during the Phase One process, or the county really discovered during the Phase One process, just due to the, the nature of building the road up on the soils as bad as they are in the flood plain there, they want to, what they call surplus loading on the road and allow that to settle over the course of a winter season and then pick back up with it in the spring. So that would be the goal for this fall.
As we move on to the next drainage project, we have a small one. Alton and Edward is on the east side of town, just before the railroad tracks. It's an area on Alton that has a couple hundred feet in the parkway of standing water almost year round. It's a swamp-like atmosphere at times. And this is just a smaller project, but it proves that we don't have to do million-dollar projects every time. There are smaller needs that we do have, and we're trying to get these smaller projects in also. So this one's just in design stage right now. We have the 214 South Wheeling Road. We've been talking about that over the last few years. That's moving along. Maybe we'll get demolished later this year and we'll work through the steps with the park district over there. So those are on the drainage improvement side. Stormwater projects, Arlington Countryside. The latest update on that, aside from the funding that you guys see in front of you, the project was supposed to be turned up late last fall. Delays in getting the right pieces and parts fell in our way. Working with Metropolitan Industries, who really want to get this project done for us, they're not quite assembled, all the parts needed. They did propose a, a change to the way that controls would be installed about a month and a half ago, and we denied that as we wanted to keep with the original plan. The project hasn't, there hasn't been a pump in the ground over there ever. It's been flooding for 40 years. We keep on getting delayed on the installation of it. We're coming into spring. But the thought process is, we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. We're not going to Frankenstein some pieces and parts together just to get the pump in the ground. If it takes another, whatever length of time to get the right stuff there, we know how to handle the neighborhood if we get a flood. We know how to bring the pumps out, and we've been doing it for years. Obviously, this goal is to make it so it's automated, but we don't want to Frankenstein it, is the nice word to use, just to get us to the next layer. Dan has the funding sources on here. Unfortunately, it's not going to be all done in fiscal year '23, as we proposed, but it shows that there's going to be a carryover of some funding that still has not been paid out, complete the job. Dan, if you want to talk briefly about the Willow Trails side of town?
Sure. The city was fortunate enough to secure a $2.4 million FEMA grant for this project. This is in the area of Willow Trails Park off of Apple, Apple Drive. We are in the process of actually going through that funding application currently. The funding is, is basically awarded to the project pending demonstration that we meet the eligibility standards for the project. So we're doing stormwater modeling, and specifically what we have to demonstrate is, we have to do a benefit cost analysis to demonstrate that the benefits of the project justify the cost for the grant. So that grant award process, we should see an announcement in September. And pending, you know, successful announcement, we would anticipate design work starting shortly after that with construction in 2024.
Next, we'll talk about, it's, it's been called the East Arlington Countryside Project. We're changing the name of this to the Dorset Area Project, just to help clarify what we're talking about. This has been talked about for the last four years or so. It's the Depresional Bowl area, east of Dale and west of Shawan Beck Road. We've had a lot of resident concerns over this area, over Marion Street and Dorset over the last years. Part of our plan for the capital improvement was, we were worried about Arlington Countryside, we were worried about improvements on the east side, and then this Dorset area is the next big ticket area to look at. The proposal coming up in our, our five-year plan is to start getting into some better engineering and how we're going to fund improvements over in this neighborhood. There's been a lot of talks over the years on doing some small pipes and doing some, I'll call them finger extensions to try to pick up some low-lying areas. But again, if you don't have a, the big drain or the big pipe at the end of it, you run into problems where you're draining backyards into someone else's house at a faster rate. So this is on our list, and it's on our plan for coming up in the future to start really getting into some engineering. This slide you see in front of you is from, I believe, 2018, from the initial review of the neighborhood and what could be done. So this is our starting point as time comes up and we move forward on this. Dan, if you could talk some sidewalks?
Sure. Yeah, there's two sidewalk projects. It is as large as this slide is with all the different line items for different funding sources, really boils down to, to two projects. It's Wolf Road and Camp McDonald. Wolf Road, we're getting very close to the finish line. As you can see from, from the spreadsheet here, there's, during Phase One, it was divided into two segments, Wolf Road North and Wolf Road South, and those have different funding sources associated with them. Really, it's all one project at this point, aside from the funding. It's, it's a sidewalk on the east side of Wolf Road from, from the metro station up to Palatine Road. We submitted final plans to IDOT on March 6 with the intent on, of staying on schedule for a June letting. IDOT is reviewing those plans. We're starting to get comments back. Based on the current status of land acquisition and the PSI, which is the environmental review, it's more likely that the project will have an August letting. We're, we're still kind of holding out hope for that Hail Mary for a June letting, but more likely we will be in August. And in which case, we will likely have to phase the project. We'll complete the initial portion of the work prior to the winter and then finish off the, the project in 2024. And then the other project is Camp McDonald Road. The city received an investment Cook grant for 80% funding for Phase One and a portion of funding for Phase Two as well. And so Phase One engineering is in progress. We're, we've done a topographic survey. We're starting the design work. We're targeting completion of Phase One towards the end of 2023 and looking to start Phase Two engineering in early 2024. So we've got some funding for that in this fiscal year yet as well. Both those things would be pursued with the idea of, of construction in the summer of 2025.
Thanks, Dan. We've moved on to sewer system maintenance. We've talked over the years about the television, telemising work we've done and the uploading to our GIS system, and then analysis by Guelph Hamilton as to a triage of what's the most important things to go after. Our first two years, we hit it real hard, and now we're going to be going more towards the maintenance. We're doing some CIP lining this year. Contracts were just figured out with an MPI just last week, Dan. And.
Correct.
We have, we could spend 20 million bucks on the sewer system and doing every little thing that we've seen, but we're taking a systematic approach to it and getting it right, hopefully. The cured and placed lining, we just talked about, I believe we're at 60 grand or so this year, or up to 90 is our forecast, Dan?
Correct. We had, we had initially prepared a larger scope of work. Last year's MPI, the prices were, were kind of skyrocketing on the, on the contractor. We pared down the scope, thinking prices were going to be higher in 2023. As you mentioned, we just got bids back last week, and what we had budgeted as $90,000 worth of work came in at about $60,000. So it creates the opportunity to potentially add some of that work back in.
And it'll be a contractor who's done work for us in the past and, and doing work all across the suburbs, and they do it very well and with minimal adverse effects to any of the residents. So it's a great program, and we would much rather line a pipe than dig it up. It's just, it's more surgical and the results are superior. And that's it on the sewer maintenance. And our part of the capital proposal tonight, the capital funding projects. Nate or Bob?
Are there any questions for the capital improvement plan?
Any questions from anyone? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any, anyone further?
No. Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to go.
Yes.
For the next steps for this budget is First Read, who's going to be on April 10, 2023, with a final approval at the April 24 date. That's what the dates that are going to be upcoming up in the tasks that are going to be.
All right. Very good. All right. Anything else? Peter?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor. I think we are at approval warrants.
Okay. Before we go there, do any of the elected officials have a report to give this evening? I assume that, or any staff members have a report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to give a brief update.
It's Dan. I'm sorry. Yeah, Dan. Yeah. Phil was speaking. I apologize.
Ah, no problem. Excuse me. Mayor, council, I just want to do a quick update. As I've reported out in the last months, the building department has taken a very active role with the owners of both the Wimbledon Lakes and Country Pines homeowners associations over on the east side. We've did a full foot audit of all the buildings' exteriors and had an ownership meeting with both associations where we had representation by 85% of the Wimbledon Lakes owners and 55% of the Country Pines owners. And to date, about 30% of those owners have already turned in their remediation plans for review. So it was very well-received. We're already seeing some significant work and cleanup work being done in the area. And it, we're, we're happy with the results so far, but it's only the beginning. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to date that it was a very successful series of meetings, and we, it looks like we got good cooperation. Thank you very much.
It's great to hear.
It's good news. Thank you. And that does bring us to the approval of warrants. Madam clerk?
Yes. For the expenditures, we have a total of $90,623.65. We had a wire payment on March 10, 2023 payroll. That amounted to $169,616.27. Adding those two together, the total warrant came out to $260,239.92 for tonight's.